Senator Clark, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor. Item 7 is being pulled by its proponent, the city manager.
Have you had item number 7 pulled?
YubaSutter.live's local government livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake. For lifelong local residents or helping other residents keep things safe. Providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Tensky truck rental. Details at PlumasLakeSelfStorage.com.
And I see we have... ...something with us? Tell us about it. And I'm happy to pay for this. Where is it? Oh, how wonderful.
So, thank you for letting us come here tonight to talk about our new book, Historic Marysville City Cemetery. I'm Phyllis Smith.
I'm Victoria Tudor.
And just to be clear, we are not here as members of the cemetery commission, although we are members. We are here as members of the Friends for the Preservation of Yuba County History. This is the cover photo of the book. And we don't know exactly when it was taken, but we think it was probably the early 20th century. It looks to us like it was a work crew, because there's a couple places that I can't actually point out to you right this second, where there are men in what appear to be law enforcement uniforms. The far right, yeah. There's another one to the right of that middle building, the Strain Crypt. It's just, he's a little harder to see. So, in August, we were honored to be allowed to adopt the cemetery as a park. And we had a really nice ceremony and presentation that was all done up by the city staff. And we had a number of you all there, yes, thank you. And we got this great sign. So, thank you very much. We are very happy to be officially adopting the cemetery as our park. I know what's supposed to be there. Yay. Oh, one more. Okay. So, these are the gates to the cemetery. They are not historic. They were erected in 1996. But they do a nice job of framing the entrance to the cemetery. Go ahead. This is another picture. Do you know when this was taken?
I think it was in 1972.
Really? Oh, I thought it was older. Okay. Well, anyway, we call that historic. So, along the back, you can see the train track, right? So, it's up on a berm. So, this is looking east from Highway 70. And right there in the middle is the Winter Crypt, which is going to show up in the next two slides. Oh, Cue the Train, yes. So, this is also not a historic photo, but this is the last time the cemetery flooded. And this was in connection with Oroville Dam's spillway problem. So, the cemetery has got levees or high embankments on three sides. And then at the north, there's a sluice. So, it's like a bowl just waiting for water to come down from the north. And this is the Potter's Field. And on the left, about 2/3 up, you can see the Winter Crypt. It just keeps showing up in our photos. This one?
I think it was 1972.
Yes. So, Potter's Field is where people were buried who were indigent, who had no family to speak of, or that we knew of, or people who were unidentified. So, generally, they did not have a headstone unless some benefactor came along and put one up. Yes, there are records of some of them. So, it's about 3 acres, about 2,500 people there. And yeah, you can see that grid pattern that shows you there's been disturbance of the soil. This is from the 50s, we think. So, there was no fence at the time. Vandal's came in and knocked over headstones and monuments and broke them. And floods come in and move the dirt, and then things shift and fall. And we also have a problem with ground squirrels, which tunnel under, you know, and then the tunnels collapse. So, the Friends for the Preservation of Yuba County History raises funds to repair headstones. And the city council has also been very generous every year in giving us significant funds to do that same work. So, thank you. Marysville was established before California was a state. So, everybody who came here was a pioneer. And in 1869, the Marysville Society of Pioneers was formed. People who could join were men who arrived in California before stated. So, before September 11th, 1850. This is the photo that you had as a background there. So, J.J. Riley was a local photographer, and he took all these portraits between 1877 and 1886. And then he made this composite, putting them all together. There were 135 members of the society. There are 111 photos in this picture. There are 46 pioneers buried in the cemetery, and 30 in our book. And I'm going to talk about three tonight. But each of these, if you get to the original photo, each of these men had a number by their head. And then below this, in the original photo, is a list of who they were. So, we have everybody's name. We can tell who all these people are. So, Charles Covellod, or in his native French, Covio, was the founder of Marysville. He came here in 1846, so before the gold rush. And he worked for Theodore Cordua, who was a big landowner in the area. And when gold was discovered in 1848, he was ahead of the game. The 49ers weren't here yet. And he mined, one of the first people to mine, in the Yuba River. And so, he did well. He married Mary Murphy, who was a Donner Party survivor, and he named Marysville after her. They both died in 1867. And while he is buried in our cemetery, she's buried across Highway 70 in the Catholic Cemetery. Dr. Smith Miles came here. He had been an army surgeon. And I was just noticing your seal up here that says Marysville was incorporated in February of 1851. Well, the next month, Dr. Miles was elected mayor. He was the first elected mayor of Marysville. In 1916, Frank Bevan of Bevan &amp; Sons Undertakers found his untended grave. And so, because he had been the mayor, he asked the city council to provide funds for the maintenance of his grave site. And this is his headstone. Ebenezer Hamilton was an undertaker also. And he was also the elected coroner and elected sexton, which meant he kept the records for the cemetery. And he did that from 1850 to 1870. And when he was done, he petitioned the city for payment of expenses and whatever he thought was owed to him, and the city refused to pay. So, he took those records with him, and we don't have them. There are occasional records that have been published in the paper, but mostly 20 years of burials are missing. No. We think there are about 10,000 people buried in the cemetery, which means there's 10,000 stories. And we had to just obviously pick and choose who we could put in the book. We didn't have room for that. This is Reverend Randolph. He was born into slavery. He escaped through the Underground Railroad in 1848. He came to California in 1851. He was a barber and a businessman. And in 1856, he took charge of the New Baptist Society. He raised $5,000, and he had built the Mount Olivet Church. This was on Sixth Street. And I'm sorry it's gone, because it's gorgeous. I don't know. Do you know where? George Hackett was a shotgun messenger for Wells Fargo. He rode the stagecoach and protected the goods inside and the people inside from stagecoach robbers. He also hunted them down, and he recovered stolen treasure. And when he died, Wells Fargo put up a headstone for him. So, on the right side, you can see the slab, and at the back of it is a pedestal where that headstone sat. Well, in 2015, this is what that headstone looked like. So, Wells Fargo and the Friends for Preservation of Yuba County History pooled their resources and bought this new monument for him. And then they put the old one in a brick form there at the back. So, it's still there. You can see the old one and the new one. This is his nemesis, Black Bart, who you can see had a lot of names. So, Black Bart was actually a pioneer. He came here in 1849 with his brothers to search for gold. He went back east, and in 1862, he joined the Union Army. He was a first lieutenant and was seriously wounded at Vicksburg. In 1875, he came back to California, and he started the career that we all know him for. And he robbed stagecoaches until 1883. And then he was arrested and sent to San Quentin for four years. But when he got out, he went right back to what he had been doing. W.T. Ellis, we've all heard of him, was the father of Marysville's levee system. He started in politics at an early age. He was 20, I think, when he was elected to the Board of Supervisors, maybe he was 22. And he also was mayor. And then he was instrumental in making sure that Marysville's levees were strong, that would withstand the rivers, and that there would not be another...
That was wonderful. That was really a great presentation. Thank you.
And you do each have an autograph, but...
I will treasure this. Thank you. My word. Next on our agenda, Mr. Mayor Ricky Samiyoa. Wearing another hat right now. What do you want us to smoke?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Staff, Ricky Samiyoa with Blue Zones Project. I'm here to talk to you. It's actually...
Were you smoking when you were mayor? Just thought I'd check. When I was in the Navy, late 60s, early 70s, I'm in the Navy, and I'm taking flights. And there was a smoking section in the airplane.
Vote free protections to all public spaces, city hall, and parks. We will equally build there, at least by the city. Also have opportunities to bring people at housing conferences. Vote free protections for... For that all public events. In my mind, this was... I believe... Have a strong partnership. Vote here. For the Z. How many matters? So... Unfortunately, the Republican line associate... Hey. Fortunately, we have a... It is kind of a... Propagative area. Vote free outdoor area. Vote free housing. Happy products. Vote free... How young people access this too. We can access. Prices. But we have an opportunity to... After we have the... Just a county or about 20... Higher cancer death. Our friends at the... Cars. Here, ask about. Um, I think... A resident survey for smoke. Outdoor space. Who demonstrates... Also ask about when they're at events. Have four residents who have already moved. Who have left events. Really, our families are asking. 44%. I'm under... About 40% passed the law in 198... Actually, this is... Also, keep in mind, there's a smoke-free housing policy at... Values every... So, we have four recommendations. Ask the UDOT, the comprehensive definitions. Part of the bikes. Buses. Products. Act naked. Protection. For the community to prioritize. You package for this. Second word, correct. Is that you have to protect. From... All the... Housing conflict. Part of the house. Or... Opportunity. Any of these. Protection for other... And... Of course. Tell me that would... The current housing... First... 44% of our... Just reject. Enhancing quality of inventory. Per recommendation. Put at... Provision all public space. Recommendation. Companies. All municipal. Spaces. Uh... For all municipal. This is a... Completely purposeful quality of... Act for this. Townies would open act. Sessions and local workers are... Like many. Parts. First. Act in time specific outdoor. For... Type risk. Public event. Completely concertic. Private. Act the recognize. Having provision also will be... Family's... Act for me. Oh, this is... Or something. Also, uh... There. On city. So, here is that. A. If it's smoking, I'm others. I was calling you. I'm looking at me. Out at the event, I serve. For option, house, smoke, food, street, play going right. Play goes away. Other, uh... Of course, we do this. I think. I think everyone is... Believe me. My way, go. Like to see... Proper sign. How are... Uh... Act for science. Off the... Out of the... Uh... Really, an effective sign, and just about compliant. Connect. Fast and full. Research. Or the orienting. At 18%. Also, effect. Edit. Well-designed sign, as the community. Add this more. Best of those. Are ready. Also, ready. Haven't... Had any... Uh... I assume. Yes, it is. Who we definitely comprehensive. Back on the. Multi-unit. For now, for balconies and. Tech resident. If it's smoking, both city home and city. In a areas, you find half or appropriate. By the risk. Forces like options, option A. First, what look? Authorize that to prepare for the company. For strategic. Yeah, I have. Contact community.
Questions? Yes, questions? Go away. Any questions or comments? How do we do this so we don't burden the police department with a bunch of calls about smoking?
Any dogs anymore? I'll say some. Um, part of it is, um, we have signage. That's not going to be. Smoking up. Cars, um. Reminder, the officer might say, hey, if you see the sign, or he says, hey, can you see the sign? You know, we have, um, for the chief and same person kind of for, I think I have. It's not persistent problem, but I think, I heard the. On smooth. Smooth events, uh, and it is push it, but I think times every, in our, in our life. Call them tomorrow morning, and I know that, hey, they get frustrated, but I think that's the way we shake our norm. And so that, and it does forward.
Again, um. Any call probably to the police department would have a low priority. There's a lot going on in the city. And worry about that. And. No, no, a question about, um, multi-family housing. What do, what do the property owners, do property owners have rules now? I mean, do you have any sense of that?
I think, uh, there is.
I'm talking about private, not hide. Would you, would you lobby them directly to do that?
Yeah, actually, yeah.
Well, they might have to get kicked out. Break a lease, if it's, if it's a provision and lease. I, I think everybody embraces your objective. It's, it's how far the city wants to go and get involved in managing it. So do you, do you have some model legislation you could share with us? Why don't you? Find, find something middle of the road. I don't want.
No, no, but I think you give us some parameters, I think. Premiers, that's a pretty straightforward, that's it.
Oh, yeah.
Public events, uh, I.
I got, I got to admit, I'd be offended if I'm at the Peach Festival and someone's blowing smoke in my face.
That's, that's. But remember, you guys. Back to the.
Please, if you have some model legislation, please share it with us. Perfect.
Uh, some more, actually, um. Multi-unit on, uh, I feel wicked. Multi-unit.
Mr. Jim Shatter, City Manager, would like to share something.
So, um, just a couple of examples first. I, I did encounter at the Peach Festival, we were, uh, standing up near the stage and a person came in and was vaping. And the entire crowd moved away. So, uh, I think it would be beneficial to do at city events, and we do have control over that. We already have ordinances in place for smoking at city facilities, and we don't allow that. The key there is it's missing, uh, the vaping, uh, component and the cannabis component, so I would be very supportive of that. In fact, another example, we're at, uh, Motor Park, uh, and they were having a, uh. Assemblage where, uh, some of the unhoused were being fed, and there's a no smoking sign there, uh, and. A bunch of people are smoking right in front of the no smoking sign, so I, I don't want to burden our police department, but in that case. Having a complete definition and better signage would probably help them if they needed to address that type of issue. But it would really be, in my mind, their option as to when, when they enforce, whether they really have a problem. The, the one that I, uh, struggled with and, and, uh, Mr. Samio gave some options was. If it's in our public right-of-way, not, not, not in a park or something like that, but an event in the public right-of-way. But it's not our event, and do we really want to have, exercise full control over that? Or we, do we provide that, uh, option to the event holder? And that really just becomes a policy decision as to what we want to do there. I could see some pros and cons to, to that. Signage is a kind of a no-brainer. Um, we can put signage up in our properties, and we already have some bylaw already. I think the enforcement, though, and I, I talked to the chief about this, it's just, um, we don't want to box ourselves in from the enforcement standpoint and require them to respond and enforce because frankly, they, that may not be the highest priority at the time.
Would not be.
So, um, I, I, uh, Mr. Samio and I have talked about this, and the intent would be have him present and give you guys the background, and then, uh, based on deliberation, staff can prepare a draft ordinance to, to look at.
There we go.
Sure. If I recall correctly, Nevada City, California, had created an ordinance, a special no-smoking ordinance, especially in their downtown area. And they were really quite, um, thorough in their signage, and I believe it's socially driven. I don't think anyone really dares smoke in Nevada City, California, and I don't know if anyone is familiar with Nevada City, California. But that signage came in very quickly, and it was, it's very handy. So you could look at what Nevada City's ordinance is, and then, and then to the extreme. I would look up what Davis, California's ordinance is, if they have one, and then I would look at Oroville's, just to see. And then I would average it out, using an example of communities that have the same sort of population. But Nevada City, for their tourism alone, made sure there's a clear no-smoking ordinance on every building.
That's called a posse. Thank y'all for being here. Okay. Now we go to the committee in consent calendar. And first off, if there is anyone who wishes to speak on any item on the agenda, or on any item, actually, any item on the consent agenda, or any item not on the agenda, they are free to speak now. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody? Thank you. We'll move to the consent calendar. Consent calendar, these are matters considered routine and therefore generally approved by one motion unless a council member or a city manager first requests that a matter be removed for separate discussion and action. What is the will of the council?
I'd like to make a motion to move to approval.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We move to the discussion and action calendar. There's one matter on the discussion and action calendar, and it will be dealt with separately and acted on by the council. Once it is presented, the public will have an opportunity to speak, and the item is titled Transfer of Property to Caltrans. And the recommendation is to pass a resolution to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with the state of California Department of Transportation, that would be Caltrans, for the requested temporary construction easement, right-of-way easement, and property acquisition as described in the attached materials, and approve conveyance of the identified parcel, and authorize related actions necessary to complete the transaction. Mr. Dan Flores.
First, I just want to mention that Maggie here does a great job putting the packet together, so I just want to tell her it's a great job. But good evening, Mayor and Council. Two thumbs up, yeah. But good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you is a follow-up from last week's presentation regarding Caltrans Highway 70 Binni Junction Improvement Project. At that time, the council approved three of the four parcels related to temporary construction easement, property acquisitions, needed for Caltrans to move forward. We're bringing forth a parcel back tonight for reconsideration. This particular property is located near the cemetery and includes an area where our cemetery watchman currently resides in a mobile home. We held off final approval last week because we wanted to confirm that Caltrans, with Caltrans, that their work wouldn't require relocating the watchman. Since then, we've had additional discussions with Caltrans. Tonight, we have a representative from Caltrans here as well, John Valentine.
Welcome.
If you have any questions. And they've confirmed, though, that they can fully accommodate the existing trailer and the resident, and there will be no need for relocation, so the city's operations will not be affected at all. So tonight, the staff is recommending that city council approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the agreements for Caltrans for the temporary construction easements, right-of-way easements, and property acquisitions described in the staff report. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Hang on for a second. Any public comment, Madam Clerk?
Not on this item, no.
Any questions or comments from the council? Done, noted. What is the will of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous approval, ma'am.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dan, and thank you, Caltrans.
Thank you, Maggie.
Now, the public hearing has been pulled, but I understand, I recognize you folks from last time, and you're with the tow company, and you're trying to get something done, and you want this matter done. I understand that the city is going to do what they can to make things work for you. Mrs. Amanda.
I'll be working with.
Yeah, he and our city attorney can come up with something so we can get your situation squared away right away. How's that? Wanted to let you know we care. You bet. Okay. Committee reports, comments, what have you. Marjorie, Councilmember Rollins. Here we go.
I just think it's always nice.
Hardest-working member of the council.
I think it's always nice what all of you do for us every day. So appreciated. Makes our job, my job, their job, a little bit easier. We can always come to you with questions and have the answers. Please go away. So I appreciate that. As far as, oh, gosh, I have a lot of things, but nothing of real importance. I was hoping that Dan could maybe share, when he has time. It's what was shared at Secog regarding the, what's it called? I haven't the name of it. Stop, what was it called? With the presentation. Charles, and he came here to the city?
Strong Cities.
Strong Cities?
Oh, sure, yeah. We had a wonderful visit. Jeremy and I, and also Councilman Gilchrist hosted a tour with several Secog staff, three Secog staff in particular. And then Chuck Roan from the Strong Cities, he wrote the book Strong Cities, and we were excited to have him here. We did a walking tour. We left City Hall and walked towards Chinatown, walked through the Chinatown district, locked up First Street, headed over east on First Street, then visited the speakeasy with our host, the Councilman Gilchrist, who gave a good history of the city. Jeremy and I talked about the city and the traffic flows and the streets in general, and he had a lot of great recommendations, which... Helping cities to grow from where they are and develop in a good way. So he talked about walkability, but he also talked about, you know, keeping transportation the way it is and the flows the way we have them, and then how to attract businesses and development into the community. So it was very good. It was great to have Secog. I know you're a Secog representation. If you go, please thank them, because we were just one of two cities they selected to visit that day.
And he was at Secog and did a presentation. It was great.
Okay.
And it's in my Amazon cart.
Wonderful. You bet. Yeah, it was wonderful. It was really, really intelligent. Yeah.
Councilman Gilchrist.
I want to commend city staff once again, and the city manager Jim Shad for our strategic planning meeting and goal-achieving meeting that we had, and I'm just going to leave it at that. It was outstanding, and I'm looking forward to a continuation of that. And it's very enlightening, and the city staff, you really know what you're doing, and you came fully prepared, and it was incredibly informative. Thank you very much for the hard work. I'm pleased to remind everyone that there is a lot of construction going on in the Chinatown area, primarily the Frank M. Booth Building. There is a crane in the air, finally, Mr. Mayor, a crane lifting heavy equipment and heavy materials to build a taller building out of steel. It's pretty awesome. It really is. And the foundation took quite some time to put up, and they're going to be operational very soon. It is very exciting, and I see a lot of people working on that project, and they're spending money here. Also, there is an apartment building that is on B Street that looks like it's almost finished. So I'm seeing a lot of positive growth and activity in Marysville. It's very exciting, and I thank you.
On which street is the new apartment?
So this is the B Street. This is the muse. This is Spurbeck Court. It's directly, yeah, yeah. It's, I would love to live there.
Has it got a new name?
It might, you know, it may even, yeah, who knows? Anna Spurbeck Court, I think that was her name, or Lily or something. Anyway, so, and then I just wanted to go back to Dan's comment about the walking tour with the Secog representative. You really, we walked through downtown before we went to Chinatown. So he got to see downtown before we took him to Chinatown. So we really did, he covered downtown and got to see. And he said Marysville has the best bones of any city he has ever been in. So we're in great shape. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor.
I don't have anything to say after these two. I haven't had any committee meetings, and I am not going to tell the staff anymore how wonderful they are, even though I know they are. So, but no, thank all you guys, but I have no staff report, I mean, committee reports.
If I could, again, with respect to the nice folks from the tow company, if I could prevail on city manager and city attorney to check in with them and make sure that you understand what they're trying to get done, maybe we can help them get that done before we leave here tonight. These guys and you. If I had any brains, I'd do it myself, but I don't know how to do it. Anyway, Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
I have a few items, but not too many. First of all, Halloween's coming up, and we at City Hall are putting on, in the spirit of Oz, Wizard of Oz, open house, so to speak, for the young ones to come by. Additionally, the county government center is putting on a similar event, same night or same day. And the probation office is doing an event a little later, so that will be a good opportunity for parents to bring their children out to do an alternative to trick-or-treat. So I do not have the specific times. Mr. Flores may have those, and I'll turn that over to him, and then I'll come back to my other items.
Yeah, the trunk-or-treat is on the 30th, and that is in the evening. I don't have the specific time. Do you have that? I don't have a specific time, sorry about that. And then the Emerald City Halloween Walk of the Yellow Brick Road is at City Hall and the Police Department. And that is, my schedule says 1:00 to 2:00, but that, is it? Yeah, 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. 1:00 to 2:00 for the walk themselves, yeah. And as the city manager mentioned, we're all going to be dressed up like Oz, but he's the Wizard of Oz, so.
What day is this again?
This is on the 31st, Halloween, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Come join us.
I haven't worn a costume on Halloween since I was...
You can have mine.
That was so quick. I wonder what that means.
And then, you want to talk about Scarysville?
Yes, please. You, please.
So we have Scarysville, downtown Marysville, sponsored by the MBA and also the Masons. So the Masonic Lodge local is working with the MBA to put this together. They're expecting over 10,000 people on Halloween night in our downtown, so that would be a really good place for city council to join us, so hopefully you can come. And that's from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. And I see Vance is having a heart attack over there, but yeah.
Welcome back.
That's a lot of kids, but they are literally expecting that many kids to be there that night.
Well, that's just up the number of bags of candy I'm going to buy at Costco tomorrow to put in the thing downstairs.
Nation bins they put downstairs and in other locations around the city. Please be generous.
Can you take a contribution in lieu with cash?
Marjorie might be able to.
I'll just buy the candy. I'll just buy the damn candy.
She works with the MBA.
Liz Gates.
I have good taste in candy.
That's all I have.
Okay, I just wanted to mention, and this is where staff gets another pat on the back, we have had a lot of activity in just my calendar tomorrow. We have meetings with Secog on mode shift grant, which is the traffic calming in northwest Marysville. We have a meeting on Ellis Lake improvements related to the Clean California Grant, and the Reconnecting Cities Grant. We have a meeting with Secog. Additionally, we have a meeting that our chief, our public works director and community development director are leading, actually, Parisha runs the meeting, our code enforcement officer, on code enforcement activity. So I just want to commend our executive staff for really starting to move these projects along. I was concerned about how many we have on the books, but their leadership is really evident at this point. And those projects, I feel much more comfortable that they're actually progressing. Oh, the other one was D Street. I think we've got a meeting on D Street, the lighting project, and mallards on D Street. So just a little bragging on staff, they really are starting to move forward, and it's their, the executive staff's and some of their staff's leadership that's really making a difference. And that's all I got.
You forgot to mention our street.
Oh, we do have a street, yes. At 2:00 tomorrow, that's another one that the Streets and Traffic Committee are diligently working with staff on, and I think our big topic tomorrow, which will eventually come to council, is another CDBG project that is related to streets. And then, I did miss one more thing. The strategic planning, some additional information will be coming to council members via email, based on our conversation in the last meeting. That's it.
Remember when the next meeting is? Okay, the next regular meeting of the Marysville City Council will be Tuesday, November 4th, that's after Halloween, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. We're adjourned.
UBSutter.live's local government livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties.
Each week, local governments and schools make important decisions that have short-term and long-term impacts on our community and quite possibly on you. UBSutter.live makes it easier for you to know what's going on. We livestream up to four local government meetings every Tuesday, important special meetings, Oliver's Public Utility District's Monday and Thursday meetings, and town halls. To make it easier for you, we pull out informative sections and present them individually. For your information, our new series that posts Wednesdays right here on UBSutter.live. Subscribe to our YouTube channel, like and follow our Facebook page so you know when we're live and when we posted something new. For your information, local government meetings made shorter, posting Wednesdays here on UBSutter.live.